Let's see. The time has reached four o'clock, or we're pretty close?
I think we're there.
Very good, um. Let's see, would you give us a moment? Okay. Well, we'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting, those who might be joining us via Facebook or Zoom, we appreciate you being here. Of course, Governor Herbert has declared a state of emergency in regards to our current crisis. And discouraging more than ten people in a meeting at one time, and so we're using technology to do our meeting today. These are interesting times, we wish everybody the best. As we start our meeting today, we'd like Commissioner Oomquist will give us an invocation, after which our County Clerk Auditor Kemp Hayton will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to meet as a county commission and those involved with the county's business at this time. We appreciate those applicants that have filed their requests before us and for those items of business that are routine for our county to operate. Under these trying times, we ask for thy hand of peace and calm to extend to our dear citizens throughout the county and throughout the state, indeed throughout the world. May they find measures to protect themselves as well as care about others and feel as they work themselves through these days that they will find ways to improve upon the things that they experience and of course to look forward to better times. We ask for thy hand of providence to be over us in this regard. Bless the county employees that are working so hard to not only keep safe but to keep the business of the citizens properly functioning. We ask for thy blessings upon all of them, our healthcare workers, doctors, and those who are working on the front lines of this tragedy to give them peace and comfort about what they're doing as well as an immunity from biting any harmful effects to themselves. We ask for these blessings to extend to them as well as their families or any who are suffering likewise. We also ask thy blessing upon businesses to be innovative and to find ways to operate but yet do it in such a way that they keep their doors open but are mindful of the public's concerns. We ask for thy blessings in this accord and upon this meeting, in the name of Jesus Christ.
If you'd all stand wherever you might be and remove your hats if you have them and we'll just go along together here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Kim and Commissioner Oomquist, appreciate you. The consent agenda is, the consent agenda is a means of expediting, the consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that items be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is not debatable.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve today's consent agenda consisting of Item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment for March eighteenth, twenty twenty, through April seventh, twenty twenty. Item B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of March seventeenth, twenty twenty, and emergency meeting minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty. Item C, consideration of administrative adjustments for real property. Item D, consideration of administrative adjustments on personal property. Item E, consideration of application for property tax abatement. There are three. Item F, consideration of settlement or deferral of property taxes. Our clerk auditor has ten agreements he would like us to approve. Item G, consideration of disposal of surplus property from the Washington County Sheriff's Office. Item H, consideration of Utah forestry fire and state lands, request for federal excess personal property. Item I, consideration of application for federal assistance for Santa Clara watershed. Item J, consideration of de-obligation and closeout request form. And finally, item K, consideration of approval of transfer of one specialty public defender contract from Doug Carey to Trevor Terry and amending Doug Carey's lead public defender contract.
Very good, we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I second those items.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item one on our regular agenda is a consideration of purchase request. Kemp Hayton, are you?
I think Ray is doing this in another room.
Oh, very good, Ray, are you joining us via Zoom?
In here.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I am, except for it's not quite the same, I don't know, it's just a...
Right. Okay, I have quite a few, so bear with me here. The first one we have is for emergency services, this is a grant-funded item. It's for dual-band mobile radios and the accessories that go with them. This is a regional asset for Iron County on the state contract and a total of twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. The next item was going to be for a solar messin trailer. I actually got word today this purchase is not happening, so you don't need to worry about that one. The next one is for, it's also a grant-funded item, a hazmat suit, it's a full encapsulating suit for sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Onto tourism. The first one is for online event management leads. This, this right here is based on internet searches and meeting planners that gives tourism a lead to follow up on and possibly book events. It also includes the cost for ads to boost searches, and that's a total of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. The next one is for, this is the first installment for a co-op marketing campaign. This right here is what we owe so far, but the campaign has been suspended due to COVID-19.
Thank you.
That total is eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Did you have a question?
No, I just was commenting that we've suspended the advertising campaign, but we still had that first installment we need to pay.
Yes. Okay, the next one is for branding services for the Ironman World Championship. The cost includes marketing strategies to increase the length of stay and dollars spent by athletes and the folks who accompany them. And that total is twenty thousand, one hundred dollars. The next one is for the Dixie Center, it's the roof replacement in the northeast area of the Dixie Center. This is a planned cost at eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. The next one is for Legacy Park, it's a removal of seven swamp coolers and gas tube heaters in the Harmony Building. And this includes the removal of the swamp coolers, but not the removal from the premises, because they're going to be reused on another building. Removal and disposal of gas tube heaters and installation of the new ones. And that's a total of one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, and that is also a planned expense.
Eight hundred and ninety-four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One hundred and thousand, eight ninety-four. The next one is for the library, this is lab, they're replacing staff and lab computers that are twenty-fourteen or older. There's thirty-eight of them, and that cost is thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. The next one is for the road department, this is a usual purchase of equipment fuel for the total of sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and ten cents. The next viewer for the sheriff's office. The first one is a blanket field for commissary purchases, and that's a total of fifty-five thousand dollars. The next one is a blanket field for bulk food purchases for the kitchen, that is thirty thousand dollars. The next one is for two police interceptor vehicles and a total of seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and five dollars.
So we're intercepting the police?
Yeah.
We should have them changed to sheriff interceptors, okay, got it.
I think most people would know them as Ford explorers.
Okay.
The next one is for five Ford patrol trucks in a total of a hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. All of those patrol vehicles are planned expenses, they were budgeted. The next one is for the cut-down and removal of dirt and ground for the new search and rescue building. And they're moving, the road department is doing that and moving the dirt to the shooting sports park for raising the firms and other dirt work there. And so the road department is estimating that cost at sixty-one thousand, sixty dollars.
But where?
And the final one's the sheriff's office?
I think that's, yeah, that's, yeah, we're moving from the sheriff's office into the road office, but, or road department, but you're...
Correct, more of a trans, more of a trans, for an extent.
So we're robbing Peter to pay Paul and the sheriff's okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Pretty much. Okay, the final one for the sheriff's office, this didn't technically need to come before the commission, it didn't go over the ten thousand, but it was thought appropriate to let you know that the disposal of surplus property from the sheriff's office you approved earlier is going towards, those are three old trailers going towards two new trailers, and that is costing us zero dollars.
Excellent, thank you for the transparency.
I like those kind of purchases.
And then unless there's any questions on any of those, that is all.
Do we have? Let's see, I have, we have, we have one more.
No, we'll be ratified.
Oh, but that's ratification later, okay, very good, those are, okay, all right. Well, very good, any questions or concerns commissioners?
I move that we approve the purchase requests that have been brought to us by Ray.
With the exception of the second one, that they can't supply.
Yes, with that exception, making the first payment of it, but, oh yeah, that's right, they cannot supply, exactly, thank you Dean.
Okay, I'll second.
Have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, purchase request, it is interesting how quickly last few weeks have made each expense a little more intense, right? As we worry and wonder about our economy. Number two is a consideration ratification of a purchase request, Ray, I have you on for that one, number two?
Yes.
Friends of Switchpoint?
Yes, so the first one, these, these are both in response to the COVID-19, and the payments have been done and distributed, but it was thought more of an emergency to get the money out sooner than later, so we're ratifying these. The first one is to the friends of Switchpoint, this is for funds for homeless shelter due to COVID-19 and the amount of fifty thousand dollars. The second one is to the St. George Area Chamber of Commerce, this is for the Greater Together Small Business Resilience Fund in a total of five hundred thousand dollars.
Very good.
Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on your leadership with the Greater Together Small Business Resilience Fund. You actually beat the Governor's Office of Economics and Melon to draw there, and I think they might have modeled what they're doing after what we're doing down here in Washington County in concert with our local community.
Thank you. Well, you know, we live in interesting times and it just, it really hurts to think about the businesses and the people that are affected and how quickly things have changed for them and hopefully this will be able to keep them, keep them in our community and keep them supported long enough for this market conditions to change and turn around. Also, I think a comment about Switchpoint, we, there's, there's a lot of need there, the county is involved in the Public Health Department, the mental health, Southwest Mental Health as well as, and so usually...
Medicare, COVID pay.
Medicare, COVID pay, you know, we do a lot in that, in that realm, but this is additionally just trying to kind of support them and get them through, this time, they're not able to do their fundraisers and other things that they usually get revenue from.
Well, that major fundraiser was ten times the value of what we gave them, so this helps them, and I know it says funds for homeless, just so the public knows what it is, is it's services to the homeless, not necessarily distributing the funds directly to homeless, although their care and services they receive come out of these funds.
Very good. We have a motion, we have a motion?
No, I would take what I said, probably.
I think what Dean said.
Turn, but I just thought that your leadership there was outstanding.
I appreciate that, of course, it's a team effort, we really working together, thank, thanks to both of you as well. We have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, thank you Ray, appreciate you.
Thank you, Ray.
We're on to item three, consideration of proclamation number twenty-twenty dash twelve, National Service Recognition Day in Washington County, April seventh, twenty twenty, Gil, or Commissioner Oomquist?
You know, it may be fitting to read this under the fact that the service that everyone's rendering right now coincides with this day of recognition, so if you'll bear with me, I'll go ahead and read through this. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties are increasingly turning to service organized by AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps, National Services, and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet county needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities from educating students for the jobs of the twenty-first century and supporting veterans and military families to provide health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants serve in more than fifty thousand locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with county officials nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National Association of Counties and county officials across the country for the County Recognition Day for National Service on April seventh, twenty twenty. Therefore, be resolved, the County Commission of Washington County, Utah, does hereby proclaim April seventh, twenty twenty, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourages residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our county, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Aye.
Well-written and well-said, and we back it a hundred percent, and I think more so than at any other time in recent history, at least recent decades, have we come together to help our citizens that are feeling helpless.
You know, I really appreciate that, that first part where it talks about service being a hallmark of American character, it's definitely the part of the character of this community, as we talk about some of our response to, to the recent events, as you all know, we were talking about how can we support local businesses, how can we help people that are quarantined and in isolation? We started talking about what we were going to do at the Council of Aging for our senior citizens and what we were going to do to help support local businesses through the Tourism Office and what we call Staying Greater. And even before we could get those rolled up, if you noticed on social media, there was, there was all of these people that were just starting Facebook pages about helping people that were isolated, reaching out, shopping locally, it was almost like, you know, we couldn't get ahead of our, our citizens, our citizens were so anxious to, to, to serve and to help solve the problem. So many times, you know, the citizens of this county just amazed me in their willingness to, to serve, and I continue to believe that by and large, men, men and women are good, people are good, and especially in this community and county.
I agree, so Commissioner Oomquist, I'm going to take your reading and all of that was the motion to approve the proclamation, and I'll second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four is a consideration of local declaration, number twenty-twenty dash thirteen, a declaration extending certain tax penalty fee and interest deadlines due to COVID-19, Commissioner Cox?
This is an interesting time as we talk about, and here I am wearing a mask and looking like a robber, but COVID-19 is having a tremendous impact on the country and it varies from place to place. But I watched to see how the IRS could handle their deadline for April fifteenth, and of course, when they're encouraging us like our governor is, our mayor, to stay home, stay healthy, it makes it difficult for a lot of people to accomplish things on the schedule they regularly would. Many of these individuals are unable to work, and so there's an economic hardship imposed as well. And so I would like to read local declaration, twenty-twenty dash thirteen, dealing with extending certain tax penalty fee and interest deadlines due to COVID-19. Whereas Washington County, in conjunction with Southwest Utah Public Health Department, is responding to a worldwide crisis caused by the ongoing outbreak of respiratory illness caused by a new coronavirus, COVID-19. That was first detected in China in December two thousand nineteen and continues to expand in a growing number of countries, including the United States, and is now present in the state of Utah and in Washington County, I'll just add. Whereas on March sixth, twenty twenty, Governor Gary R. Herbert issued an executive order declaring a state of emergency due to novel coronavirus, two thousand nineteen, COVID-19. Whereas the governor's executive order recognizes the need for state and local authorities and the private sector to cooperate to slow the spread of COVID-19. Whereas on March eleventh, twenty twenty, the World Health Organization characterized COVID-19 outbreak as a pandemic. Whereas on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, President Donald J. Trump declared a national state of emergency based on the continuing spread of COVID-19. Whereas on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, President Trump and the White House Coronavirus Task Force issued guidelines to help protect Americans during the global COVID-19 outbreak. Whereas on March twentieth, twenty twenty, the Washington County Commission declared a local state of emergency and authorized certain measures to assist the local economy. Whereas on the twenty-first of March, twenty twenty, the Treasury Department and the Internal Revenue Service announced special tax filing and payment relief to individuals and businesses by extending the deadline for filing tax returns to July fifteenth, twenty twenty. Whereas Washington County desires to provide relief to taxpayers by waiving certain tax penalties, interest, and fees until later deadlines. Whereas pursuant to Utah Code Section fifty-nine dash two dash three oh six, persons setting forth all real and personal property assessable by the county assessor must file a signed statement with the county assessor on or before May fifteenth of each year. Whereas Utah Code Section fifty-nine two three oh seven outlines the penalty for filing a signed statement after May fifteenth, and such a penalty may only be reduced or waived pursuant to procedure for the review and approval adopted by county ordinance or by administrative rule. Whereas County Code eight dash thirteen dash four outlines the conditions for acceptance of such requests, including extraordinary and unanticipated circumstances occurring during the filing period, and no owner or designated representative was reasonably able to file a signed statement. Whereas Washington County desires to include the COVID-19 pandemic as a temporary condition that qualifies under County Code eight dash thirteen dash four, as paragraph E, as an extraordinary and unanticipated circumstance occurring during the filing period, and no owner or designated representative was able to, was reasonably able to file a signed statement and is waiving the penalty and interest for any signed statement of personal property filed on or before August seventeenth, twenty twenty, for the twenty twenty tax year. Whereas under Utah Code Section fifty-nine dash two dash one oh three point five and County Code Section eight dash two dash two, any applicant seeking the residential exemption for property tax must file the application prior to May first or pay an administrative fee of fifty dollars. Whereas Washington County desires to waive the fifty-dollar administrative fee for residential exemption applications for the twenty twenty tax year until October first, twenty twenty, and therefore be it declared by the Chair of the Washington County Commission that the Washington County Commission includes the COVID-19 pandemic as a temporary condition that qualifies under County Code eight dash thirteen dash four E as an extraordinary and unanticipated circumstance occurring during the filing period, and no owner or designated representative was reasonably able to file the signed statement and is waiving the penalty and interest for any signed statement of personal property filed on or before August seventeenth, twenty twenty, for the twenty twenty year. Being further declared by the Chair of the Washington County Commission that the fifty-dollar administrative fee for residential exemption applications for the twenty twenty year is waived until October one, twenty twenty. And that is the declaration, I think that tells very well with the emergency declaration that we declared earlier, and I would move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the local declaration, number two thousand, twenty-twenty dash thirteen, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, thank you very much. The next item is item five, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-twenty dash twenty-five eighty-nine, a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between the State of Utah Department of Natural Resources, Division of Forestry, Fire, and State Lands... Division of Forestry, Fire, and State Lands, and Washington County Sheriff's Office. Adam Hyder, are you there joining us?
Yes, sir.
Very good. If you wouldn't mind speaking to this issue?
Yeah, this is an MOU. It doesn't really change anything. It's just an addendum to the master agreement the Division has with the county, and it cleans up the billing process whenever we use our sheriff's office on central fires.
Oh, very good. Very good. Any questions or comments? Dean, you have part of the experience in it?
This is a pretty routine agreement that we have with the state. The state has a great firefighting capability. They contract with many of our local departments, and as commissioners, the county is responsible for fires in the unincorporated area. This agreement solidifies the obligations between forestry, fire, and state lands, the county, and the sheriff's office, and it's worked out really well for us. I would move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate you. Item six is consideration of resolution R-2020-2590, a resolution approving agreement between Washington County and Feller Enterprises LLC for the Confluence Park Field Leveling and Irrigation Project. Ron, are you there? Or Todd?
Todd should be here. Yeah, this is Todd. I'm here also.
Oh, very good. Do you want to speak to this, or I understand?
Yeah, we got this project out back on the 25th of March. We had seven bidders, most of them local. It's for irrigation preparation down in the Confluence Park area of about thirty-two acres. We got bids ranging from $588,000 down to our low bid of $212,080. That was Feller Enterprises. We'd like to award that bid to them.
Very good. Just anybody who might be joining us via Facebook or not familiar, so there was a farm that's at the Confluence of Ash, Laverkan, and the Virgin Rivers, which is between the cities of Laverkan, Hurcan, and Tocaville. That farm was purchased about 20 years ago for conservation purposes. At that time, right prior to the purchase, the original irrigation system was washed out in a massive flood. And since then, about 30-something acres have kind of just sat there, and it's been our desire for quite some time to get them back up and going and greened up. We feel like that will completely enhance the experience of kind of this both natural but also agricultural field that is down in that park, historic use. Eventually, within the coming years, there will be a water treatment plant close by, and the treated water will be used to water these fields. But in the meantime, we'll use irrigation from the Laverkan Bench Canal Company in cooperation with Washington County Water Conservancy District. But anyway, I'm pretty excited about this.
The sauce and so the hay and whatever we grow down there will have a lot of nutritious elements.
It will eventually, yes. And right now, it will just be the muddy water that comes out of the Virgin River, so.
Okay.
Very good.
Well, I'm happy to move that we accept the resolution 2020-2590, an agreement between Washington County and Feller Enterprises LLC for the Confluence Park Field Leveling and Irrigation Project to the amount of $212,080.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Todd, Ron, are you still there? I have one quick follow-up question on that. Were you able to meet with Laverkan Public Work Department today and resolve any concerns they might have had?
We've set up a meeting with them in the morning.
Oh, very good.
We've talked to them about it, and we've got a pre-construction meeting for the contractor at 10 o'clock also.
Super.
If you'd mind if I would like to come?
Chairman Iverson, I want to stress the value of Confluence Park. I hadn't ever been down there really for a year, and I'm excited for the changes that have occurred there. And I know this belongs more in a commissioner's report, but you and I planted trees down there with a group of volunteers. My congratulations to SWIC Construction, who brought their entire crew. Granted, this was before we were forbidden to meet in groups, but everybody there was, well, this is departed as they're planting trees. But the thing I noted in the bid process, and those who did bid, and I congratulate everyone who did put in a number, helps us to decide, and I think it helps them to decide for future bids. But the critical thing is that they were all local.
Yeah.
And I can remember in the last 20 years, looking at various bids and things that come, that sometimes they're all over the state. There are people we don't know, and granted, these were all good contractors that we could have trusted any one of them to do a good job. It just happened that we have to pick the lower one. In this particular case, it's a very rapid one.
Absolutely. We called on a vote, right?
We called a vote.
We have voted. Alright, very good. Yeah. Sorry, I slept there.
We could just watch and show her.
Well, I'm looking at the clerks. I'm assuming that everything is right. Item seven is consideration of resolution R-2020-2591, a resolution approving extended use of appropriated funds collected for the Recreation Arts and Parks Cell Stack. So just in regards to this, a lot of our resolutions today have been focused on the aftermath of what we're currently experiencing with COVID-19. And as we gave out the grants for our different arts partners, community partners, obviously, there was not any shows going on. There are not art shows. There are not performances. And so it did, it is necessary for us to kind of give a little flexibility. That's what this resolution request from the County Commission is that basically the grants stay in place, but we're giving them a little flexibility throughout the year to maybe the show that they were going to put on in the spring, they'll put on later, or they'll provide kind of that art back to the community. So that's, it's the flexibility that this resolution.
And it's to make those stand under the circumstances.
Yes.
Well, I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we pass the resolution R-2020-2591, a resolution approving extended use of appropriated funds collected from the Recreation Arts and Art Cell Stack.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item eight is, I have consideration of adoption of a public works report. So, Ron Whitehead, are you there?
Still there.
So this is, it's my understanding that we approved kind of the suggested work that you do every year. Isn't that kind of what this item is, that you're going to give a report on?
Just given your report on what we're working on this second quarter, what we plan on working on, and we're working on a list of the high-use rural roadworks that we will bring into you and get your approval on, making sure we get, working on some of the high-use rural roads. And also, we'll bring in a list of the chip seal projects this year, make sure that comes before you have a road to. The projects we've got going on now, as you passed in your consent agenda, we're requesting more help from NRCS on some projects along the Santa Clara Drainage. These are all 100% payment by NRCS, so the county won't have to come up with some match. And we will start working on that as soon as we get the contract in place. Once you sign that request for help, they'll send us down a contract with associated project number and everything. And that'll get everything going on that. Other projects we're working on with NRCS still, some of these are with the flood control district, gypsum wash is with the flood control, and gold's wash is with the flood control. That means they're doing a lot of the working stuff on it. We still have to manage the contracts through our end here. Confluence Park, that should start, as Todd said, as soon as we meet with them and get them going on the ground. Shooting Sports Park started yesterday. They're out there working on revisions to the practical range today. We've got a couple more items to move out of the way, but they're out there getting survey stakes in place and starting to move dirt and get things set up for that, so we anticipate a quick turnaround on that. Hopefully, get them out of here and get back to using that portion of the shooting range. Road Department's working on getting their existing roads graded for spring, and prepping roads for their chip seal projects. The chip seal projects we'll probably bring to you this year are Highway 91. We postponed that one last year to work in the gorge. Thought it would be a high-traffic area, and it was. So hopefully, the gorge is getting close to being through, but we need to get that chipped anyway, so we'll probably work on it this year. And also, the roads inside the townside area of Pine Valley, so we'll work on that too. We're doing some safety enhancements. We're getting prices on that right now on the Co-op Road. Put some barricades up along some of the narrow portions of that road, so we don't have problems with people sliding off the road or drifting off the road and not having adequate time for recovery. They'll hit those barricades and won't roll the edges there. We're working with the Forest Service on some high-use rural roads. They've asked us to help with it. So we've got plenty to work on this next quarter, and hopefully, we'll keep going on.
Very good. We'll look forward to the Co-op Safety Barricades. I do get comments from neighbors and friends that travel that road frequently. One comes to mind that the wife in particular is a little bit nervous, right, at that particular juncture in the road. So this should hopefully make them feel a little bit better. Ron, we continue to get compliments from the road department, from citizens across the county that recognize the work that they do in our county. And as we continue to have a lot of visitors, a lot of recreation going on, roads that traditionally may not have been under such stress now find themselves under a lot of stress, and you continue to do a good job there. I have this as a consideration, so I think we need a motion that basically we received this report, and it will help cover our liabilities as a county as these projects go through.
You know why? Maybe you get a gravel on their car, shifting the paint, chip seal projects. You know, if this way, we're putting the public word out early.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion to second to accept this report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Ron, the item nine, which is a commission report, let's talk about anything but COVID-19, if it's okay.
Well, I should add on the.
We can talk about COVID-19.
On the coattails of Ron, I think we still get compliments on the redo of Smith Mesa Road.
Yes, we do.
Out of Virgin, and, you know, you can gain access up there. Just recognize, there's a lot of private property up there. There's the test site still up there. So even though we have a nice road to it, it's not open season on any piece of ground, but it is wonderful to have a safe road. I do want to comment to our county employees that we have taken very seriously keeping them safe, and they have done everything they could to stay here. We've considered a lot of things as essential services, and I got a phone call today to back that up from a local developer who was able to go into the recorder's office and get the required documentation recorded to move 50 lots into the property, or in the possession, rather, of a purchaser. And they were nervous that everything would grind to a halt, and this would not happen. So they called me in particular to thank the commissioners, the recorder's office, and basically the employees at large in the county to thank them for that happening. While some things are shut down for obvious reasons, I still compliment everybody who's still out there working, and especially our county administrator, Nicole, who's juggling like 1,000 requests in the air all the time, and together with those who helped her, Ricky and Cheyenne, are meeting all those obligations and trying to make people happy. So thank you, Nicole. Other than that, I think we're just active, dealing with this very thing every day.
You know, you bring up a great point, and that's the employees of this county that really, regardless of the stress and anxiety that they might feel under the current circumstances, have been such great citizens and just coming to work every day and providing those services to the citizens.
Well.
Just been, it's been humbling to be able to work with such.
And it reminds me of the saying, when the glory gets tough, the tough get going. And our employees are toughing it out and just paying at work and providing those essential services.
Absolutely.
And being careful, and of all the people that are here, I think we should recognize being foremost, Commissioner Cox, sorry I use the informal, your first name, but of all people who have an excuse to stay away, he's here being cautious, and we're respectful. But he's fulfilling his duty not only as example, but because he really wants to. So thank you for being here, Dean.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to serve with hope to do, and the rest of the staff. We've just got wonderful, wonderful people.
Yeah, there's, it's often that we're like, "Mr. Cox, why are you here? Call in." But he's been that way throughout his entire journey, we'll call it a journey, right?
Been a journey.
Over the last year plus, and I'm sure the rain has, your wife has even more anxiety with all of this current condition that's going on. But we do appreciate you, and you're constantly engaged and totally involved in the governance of the county and making the right decisions, so.
Well, and here, Iverson, one of the important things is that we still hold these meetings to carry on the county's business. But respecting, as you read in the beginning, the governor's request that the meetings can be held, but under certain restrictions, we've kept our distance. We've cordoned people off where they need to be and via Zoom. But in an open meetings requirement, we still have taken steps to get the word out. And one that I want to mention is that, you know, with, in conjunction with the university, we have been able to use the TDS Cable Channel 22 and 108, which is their HD channel. And these meetings are rebroadcast, so even today's will be, at some point, if you look at our cameraman in the back there, a good like 35 feet away. Nevertheless, it says here that at 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m., and 5:30 p.m., and at various dates, they are also available on demand at youtube.com backslash community education channel. So thank you for being here and keeping us legal in every aspect.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. We appreciate it, and frankly, I will look forward to returning to normal conditions as far as meetings. And until then, we will stay on the journey until our next meeting.
Thanks to all.
Thank you, everyone.